Mr. Mercer, would you please read the statement to bring us back into open session?
Chair Swigert, I move that the record shows that the only items discussed in the closed meeting were those specifically cited in the motion to convene into the closed meeting, and those lawfully exempted from statutory meeting requirements.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lamonia, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Dr. Smith.
Motion carries with all board members present voting yes.
We will now move on to the invocation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I'd like to note that you may notice that many of us are wearing a blue ribbon tonight, and that is because we are certainly offering our thoughts and prayers to the family of Forrest Hooper, and we invite you to keep them in your mind as well. And at this time, we'd like to call upon Reverend Adrian Woodard from Favor Nation Church, who will give the opening invocation. Afterward, I'll ask Jade Boddy, a fifth grader from Western Branch Intermediate, to lead us in the pledge. Please stand as you are able.
Good evening. If you all would just briefly bow your heads with a word of prayer with me. Everlasting God it is with great expectation and thankful hearts that we have come together tonight. We have assembled in unity this evening with the intention on enhancing the education in our communities through tonight's school board proceedings. We are forever appreciative with the collective pursuit of the academic excellence found here in each teacher, each devoted, hard-working employee, students, parent, and guardian. We are grateful for the efforts and adder of our elected officials to serve, and we pray for their copious wisdom in every resolution today. We pray each decision will promote the welfare of this great city and the lives of each student in our communities. And while we have assembled tonight, Father, let us not also forget those who stand in harm's way to protect the freedom that we have to pray today. Protect them as they have protected us. Be the force in their response against any enemy, and if that task does cause them to be separated from their families as we approach the holiday season, comfort the hearts of their families and the minds of their loved ones with the consciousness that they are never separated from you, Lord. We are careful to give your name the praise, the honor, and the glory, and it is our Lord's name that we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God and the visible of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much to Reverend Woodard and to Jade for taking the time out of your schedules to join us this evening. We appreciate you being here. The next item is the awards from the Virginia School Boards Association. Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Chair Swigert. Each year, the Virginia School Boards Association recognizes board members who have earned awards for their participation in various V S B A activities held throughout the year. Tonight, Vice Chair Tom Mercer has received the Award of Achievement. Board Chair Angie Swigert and School Board Member Mr. John McCorvick have received the Award of Recognition, along with Dr. Cotton and myself. Former board members Mr. Louis Tayon and Mr. Mike Woods were also recognized with the Award of Recognition. Your certificates are at your places this evening, and I would like to extend congratulations to each of you. This concludes my item.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. We will now move on to the hearing of citizens. During their allotted time, speakers should observe our rules of decorum and know that expression of concerns and criticism on matters of school policy and operations is welcome. While the speaker's own comments are welcome, they may not play prerecorded messages. Dr. Smith, are there any citizens who have requested time to speak this evening?
Yes, we had six citizens that signed up to speak tonight.
I want to thank those speakers who have signed up to address the board this evening. There are two ways that citizens can request time to speak at the meeting. You can call the clerk's office before 12 noon the day of the meeting, or you may sign up to speak prior to the start of the meeting. All in-person requests to speak must be submitted to the deputy clerk five minutes prior to the published meeting's start time. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. Once your allotted time is over, we ask that you promptly exit the podium. You may choose to sit in the boardroom if seats are available, but standing or sitting on the floor will not be permitted, and you may not block the exit doors. We would also like to ask that you refrain from any behavior that disrupts the meeting, including the use of profanity, applause, cheering, or jeering. Dr. Smith, please call the first speaker.
Thank you. Speaker number one appears to be a no-show tonight, so I'd like to invite Speaker number two to the podium. Speakers are called in numerical order and are asked to state their name and city of residence before they begin.
Good evening, board. My name is Candy Hall. I am a resident of the Greenbrier area of Chesapeake with three students at Greenbrier Intermediate and Greenbrier Middle School. I am here tonight because it is my understanding that this board instituted a policy over the summer that prohibited the use of students having their own laptops. I am here tonight to appeal that decision. I have had many conversations over the course of the last four weeks at various levels of the administration, and have been told that it is the decision of this board as to whether or not you are willing to waive that requirement. It is important to note that I have asked for this for two reasons. The first is my concerns over the privacy of Chromebooks, which is well documented, and the second, the nature of the laptop as an asset. In this case, the school board and the district requires that parents accept liability for broken or misused laptops or otherwise laptops that need to be replaced. All three of my children have brand-new HP laptops that are connected to the Canvas system that's required. Them using their own laptops does not present a disruption to their ability to access any of the course materials that are required by the school, and it does not place an undue burden on the school system to allow them to use their own laptops. I am, in fact, a legacy professional in the technology industry. I have explained this at multiple levels within the district, that I'm happy to support the technical needs of my own children from day to day, and have been told that I need to appeal this to you all. I've been told that it is the school's policy, that the only exception is for medical purposes, and my children were asked to leave and threatened with suspension for the use of their own laptops in instruction. So tonight, I would like to request an exception so that my children can use their own laptops in instruction.
Speaker number three, it's your turn at the podium. We'd like to ask you to state your name and city of residence before you begin.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Eason-Williams. I live in Chesapeake, and I am here to encourage teachers. CPS teachers, and especially to the S E E family, you have experienced something that no one taught you in your classroom management course. Nevertheless, in the days and weeks to come, you will do what you always do, maybe with hidden tears, but you will hold your head up, square your shoulders, put on the most courageous smile, and do what you do. Give consolation, comfort, and care, all while pouring into your students S O L this, that, and the other. And then, at the end of each day, you will still be standing, a little weary, worn, and maybe sad, yet you will give thanks to the source of your strength for relaxing the tension in your body, calming the restlessness of your mind, so that tomorrow and in the days ahead, you may find light for your way and power to carry out your duties and responsibilities, and you will walk tall, leaning and depending on the word that declares, "Weeping may endure for a night." But because you are whose you are, count on it, teachers, joy will come in the morning. Thank you.
Speaker number four, we'd like to invite you to the podium. Please state your name and city of residence before you begin.
I think we'd all love to have her as our best friend. She's so encouraging. Hi, I'm Robin Osborne, Chesapeake resident, and I'm here to speak against the Satan Clubs meeting in our schools. Although I am not here to make judgments, for God's word states that I have to look at the plank in my own eye, I am here to speak truth. And according to God, it's the truth that sets us free and brings things to the light. To quote a bold and valuable teaching I once received, "It is better to stand alone with the truth than to be wrong with the multitude." I mentioned in the last meeting many avenues that I have pursued, and unbeknownst to me, I'm pondering why the majority of those in the position of authority, whether it be city officials or you as a school board, have been so easily willing to wash your hands of this. I understand you've been pressured by a large number of non-exempt club members, and legally you've been told you don't want to be sued over this. But finding a way to protect our children from a Satan club while still offering other non-exempt clubs is a possibility. Many suggestions have been made, and even a motion to have Dr. Cotton reclassify the clubs and define policies and regulations got shut down immediately. I called B M Williams today to ask them if they were still meeting this year, and was referred to the school administration building, to which I was then referred to Mr. Cole, who is in charge of building request use. I haven't heard back. For B M Williams to say they don't know if the Satan Club meets at their school because it meets after-school hours sounds odd. This club made the national news when it came to Chesapeake, so to think the school itself doesn't know if it meets there is scarcely credible. And why have I not been able to hear back from their new principal after many attempts to speak with her? In reading your profiles as school board members, the majority of you shared that you attend church or attended Christian universities, and that was very influential as to why you received the vote you did and got elected. It gave Chesapeake residents hope that you would stand for God's principles and safety as first priority over our students. We've been taught partial obedience isn't obedience, and allowing a Satan club because we have a good news club is giving Satan a foothold. They don't counsel one another out. Courage. Courage isn't the absence of fear, it's the ability to face and overcome fear while prioritizing a greater objective and a commitment to growth and the greater good. After hearing of the citizens, the school board chairman follows up with, if appropriate and not already provided, a superintendent's staff will evaluate concerns and provide a response. I have to say embarrassingly, I have never received a response from the staff after speaking out. Without responding or giving an explanation behind your reasoning to specific ideas or requests, I read that silence as it doesn't seem to matter what the minority of citizens are saying.
Speaker number five, we'd like to invite you to the podium. Please state your name and city of residence before you begin.
Good evening. My name is Susan Okamoto. I live in Chesapeake. Actually, Robin, who just came before me, covered pretty much my first point, and that is, there must be some way that policies can be written so that clubs such as the wrestling club at Grassfield High School, my grandson was here in June testifying because he wanted that to be able to continue, and I can understand that position. And there needs to be some distinction made between that sort of club and the after-school Satan club. And just following on that, I would like to say that, what about other organizations besides the Satanic Temple who might want to promote certain clubs in our schools? Just because of the possibility of lawsuit, are we going to say, yeah, as long as you fill out the application and fulfill all these requirements, then sure, you can go? What about an organization like NAMBLA, the North American Man-Boy Love Association? Do we want something like that in our schools? What else is coming down the pike? So, that's one thing. And then, the third point, it's been said that Satan's goal is for people to think he doesn't exist. Then, he can operate more freely through the very scientific rationalism that the Satanic Temple promotes. They say they don't believe in God, they don't believe in Satan, Satan is just, you know, they want to normalize and just make Satan just a little symbol, and it doesn't stand for anything. And so, are we to live in a society where there is no good and evil, but the freedom of doing what I want because I want what's best for me? Because I'll point out another one of the things that they promote is, what do they call it again? Personal sovereignty, which is right on the flyer advertising the after-school Satan club. Any student of history knows such freedom spells doom for a civilization. It seems we could already be headed that way in this country if you just look around you. Thank you. Oh, if I have any more time, can you answer that question? Will the after-school Satan club be meeting this year in any of our schools that you know?
Speaker number six, we'd like to invite you to the podium.
My name is Steve Sherbaum, a resident of Chesapeake. I'm here once again to ask you to do what you can as a school board to ensure the after-school Satan club no longer meets on Chesapeake Public Schools' property. I come to you today because you are the body that can get rid of this club, and I feel compelled, as a Christian, Catholic, Chesapeake resident and father of four children aged seven and under, to encourage you to do what you can to make sure the after-school Satan club can no longer meet. I would also like to know if the after-school Satan club has been approved to meet this year, and if so, when and where? I've heard that they were trying to go back to B M Williams' primary and Hickory Primary Schools. Last year when they met, I was part of a group praying the rosary to make reparation for such a blasphemous and offensive act, and I would like to continue praying for the poor souls involved with these actions, and to pray for our city to be spared from the wrath of God. Today, in my limited amount of time, I would like to bring up the parable of wheat and weeds that our Lord Jesus Christ preaches in the Gospels. Several members of this school board used it as a justification to allow the after-school Satan club to meet. I feel that you applied this parable of our Lord so poorly, and I would ask you to recant, as it is gravely scandalous and offensive, that you would use it as a justification to allow the after-school Satan club to meet on Chesapeake Public Schools' property. The problem with your application of the parable is you looked at your roles as the school board in a completely wrong regard. You are not the reapers who separate the good and the bad at the harvest. From the earthly standpoint, the harvest will happen once our students go out into the world. Some will be successful by worldly standards in having steady employment, good friendships, and successful families. Others will live worse lives by getting in trouble with the law, being emotionally damaged and harming others in a variety of ways. In the heavenly sphere and what the ultimate point of the parable, the wheat and the chaff, are separated according to those who go to heaven or hell for all eternity. Looking at the parable, your role as the school board is to be the watchman to ensure the thief does not come in the night and plant poison to destroy our crops, which are our children. What do you think would have happened if the night watch saw the thief who was planting the weeds in the field and did nothing to stop him? Not only has this happened, but our city has pointed them in the right direction to have them apply to use our facilities. Our sheriff's deputies are outside in Chesapeake uniforms with Chesapeake cars, pulling security for this awful club. What a disgrace! We know what should happen and what you as the school board should be doing according to the two other parables. First, there is the parable of the strong man, where our Lord says, "No man can enter into the house of a strong man and rob him of his goods unless he first binds the strong man, and then he shall plunder the house." You are allowing Satan to enter our schools and steal the innocence of our children. Are you representative of strong men or weak men? Has Satan already bound you? We also have our Lord's words in Luke 12:39, "But this know ye, that if the householder did know at what hour the thief would come, he would surely watch and would not suffer his house to be broken open." In closing, I ask you all to be the leaders we need to protect our children. You are elected to be our shepherds and not hirelings that care not for the sheep and do nothing to protect them. Thank you.
This concludes our speakers for this evening.
Thank you for sharing your comments. Our practice is to receive information, however, we do not usually engage in dialogue, and that is our intent tonight. If appropriate and not already provided, someone from the superintendent's staff will evaluate your concern and provide a response. We will now move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion for approval. Moved by Mr. Lamonia, is there a second? Second by Dr. Walker, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Dr. Smith.
Motion carries with all board members present voting yes.
We are now moving on to the information agenda. The only item is the enrollment and state revenue update. Ms. Lucente.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're going to have a brief, I hope, presentation on the impacts of the state budget. Whoops. Okay, my thing is not working. Can you advance the slide, please? We're going to review the, it's apparently not working. We'll review the enrollment, which I brought to you last time with our August financial statements, that we were experiencing decline and the impact on the revenues and what some of the state's requirements are for those new state revenues are on expenditures, and then we'll talk about next steps. Next slide, please. This table shows you on the left-hand side the appropriated dollars. As you probably recall from the budget discussions and during the training session with the board, that all of our state revenues are driven by our estimated enrollment, which leads to our estimated average daily membership in March, which determines our funding. So the budget that's been appropriated was based on average daily membership of $40,025. As I mentioned last time on the financial statements, we are seeing a significant decline in our expected enrollment, and right now, it looks like our enrollment might be just under .39.7 with an ADM of .39.650, which is actually a decline from the prior year's ADM. So we're looking at 375 students that we are not going to receive state money on. The state revenues actually are planned to go up $4.8 million, $4.9 million. On the left-hand side, you'll see the revenue adjustments. The $2.5 million is the estimated adjustment for the enrollment decline. That's strictly related to the number of students we are not anticipating receiving this year and being paid for. The state is providing $2.5 million for the 2% raise at January 1st, and they're providing $4.9 million for the support cap. Those numbers have been adjusted for the 375 student decline. Unfortunately, our other local revenues generally do not meet budget in the primary revenue sources, which are rentals, summer school tuition, those are the two largest ones. We did not collect summer school tuition, although we budgeted $395,000 in there. We knew that was going to happen, but what generally happens with other local revenue declines, it's either made up by federal revenues, which we are fairly certain we're going to receive the $4.5 million, or it's made up by additional other local revenues like recoveries and rebates, sale of equipment, things that are smaller budgeted revenues but generally come in higher than the budgeted. So we don't generally adjust that because those actual revenues are very variable. So the comparison of the appropriation to the expected receipts is what we actually have to manage to. That will not be what we bring back for an appropriation adjustment. We will need an increase in revenues to about $603 million, but on the expenditure side, that 2% from the state is going to cost the operating budget $4.8 million, almost $4.9. So when you look at the total of the current appropriation for expenditures, add in the 2% for the January 1st raise, if all things were equal and all expenditures were going to take place, the expenditure appropriation would be $603.5 million, which is a million two over the revenue that we expect to receive. That's probably clear as mud, right? Kind of sort of. Let's just say, we have to find a million two, because you build your budget so your expenditures agree with your revenues, but you have to manage your budget depending upon what you expect your revenues to be. So the other variable in this expected receipts is sales tax. It's too early in the year yet to really see what's happening with sales tax, but it's a little bit under where we were last year. So that could be all kinds of things. So we're going to wait a little bit before we make some kind of estimate on that, but we do know that we are going to have to make adjustments, well, not necessarily completely true. We're going to look at where other savings have taken place, either from new staffing, adjustments in fuel prices, things like that, where we compare expenditures to the prior year to see if there's places that this million two can be made up without touching staffing or making other cuts. So, to the next slide. The next steps are probably at the end of this month. We will bring back to you the appropriation request for the city council. We do have that $14 million that is coming in for what's called the all-in governor's proposal. We will be putting that in the grants. It's a multi-year use of funds, so it can last through '25, '26. Yeah, '25, '26. So CNI or T N L has several years to use those funds. So we're not sure yet. We have to look to see if we need to adjust the appropriation for grants, but we know we're going to have an appropriation adjustment for the operating budget. So that will come back on the 23rd, we hope, and then sometime in November, the city council will make that appropriation adjustment, and then we'll be able to move forward. The raise, of course, will happen January 1st, so we'll be preparing for that. So I'm available for any questions if you have them.
I don't believe I see any questions at this time, but we will keep that offer on the table. The first item on the action agenda, we will review the legislative agenda. Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Chair Swigert. In board docs, you'll find the final draft of our legislative brochure for the 2024 General Assembly Session. It is presented for board approval tonight. There are three top priorities, as you know, career and technical education, funding for public education, and school safety. We're looking forward to our annual meeting with members of the Chesapeake delegation that is scheduled to occur on Thursday, November 30. that is scheduled to occur on Thursday, November 30th. We're going to be hosting them at our Chesapeake Career Center, and that's where we hope to be sharing these priorities with our elected officials. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and again, I do request action on this item.
I'll entertain a motion for approval. Moved by Dr. Walker, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Boone, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Dr. Smith.
Motion carries with all Board Members present voting yes. Thank you.
The second and final item on the Action Agenda is the V.S.B.A. Budget Workshop. Dr. Smith.
Thank you again, Chair Swigert. I would like to share this opportunity with the Board. The Virginia School Boards Association is holding its annual Budget Workshop on October 24th in Charlottesville, Virginia. Virtual participation is also permitted for this workshop. Are there any Board Members who wish to attend? Dr. Walker? All right, I will need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Mr. Mercer, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Scott, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Dr. Smith.
Motion carries with all Board Members present voting yes, and this concludes my item.
Next is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Cotton.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board. We have several recognitions happening this month. October is Disability Awareness Month and Bullying Prevention Month. We will also be recognizing National School Lunch Week, October 9th through the 13th, and National School Bus Safety Week, October 16th through the 20th, during which times we will highlight our amazing school nutrition and transportation employees. Thank you again for giving me the opportunity to share our spotlight, to showcase some of the outstanding things happening across our schools and in our community. It's truly a pleasure to recognize and highlight our students, staff, and community members. As you may know, October is Bullying Prevention Month, and several of our schools have been marking the occasion with a very special anti-bullying program. Chesapeake Under Sheriff David Rosado visited Treacle Elementary School last week to present the Be a Hero, Not a Zero program. The goal is to use magic to teach some valuable lessons in kindness and acceptance. The program is scheduled in seven more schools throughout the month, and Under Sheriff Rosado will also be featured in our next podcast episode at the end of this month. Another great partnership brought another educational awareness campaign to our district recently with the support of our Chesapeake Integrated Behavior Health Services. All of our eighth-grade students had the opportunity to attend the Johnny's Ambassadors Program with the goal of educating students on the dangers of high THC marijuana use on adolescent brain development. The program was also offered as an evening event to parents and all other students who wished to attend. I'd like to thank CIBH and our Family Community Engagement, or FACE, team for bringing this important message to our community, and of course, I know Dr. Larkin was very much involved as well. He's our Director of Middle School Leadership. Last week, I had the pleasure to host the Chief of Staff from the Virginia Department of Education, Dr. Jeremy Rayly. Dr. Rayly joined me and several other cabinet members as we toured three of our schools. We stopped by to see our pharmacy tech and welding programs in action at the Chesapeake Career Center, congratulated staff members at E.W. Chittam Elementary on their National Blue Ribbon recognition, and finished our day at Western Ranch Middle School, where students and staff shared their experiences with the modern classroom project. I'm so proud of the great work he was able to see in action throughout Chesapeake Public Schools. Other local businesses also got a chance to see some great work in action at the annual Grassfield STEM Academy Mentor Breakfast. Seniors in the STEM program are required to complete an internship in the summer before their senior year. Just last week, they invited the mentors that hosted them over the summer to Grassfield to hear more about their coursework and how their internships have helped them prepare for their future. Several interns even worked directly with our school district as part of the Grow Our Own program. Thank you to all of our local businesses for supporting these students. Another great opportunity to connect with our community also occurred last week at our first-of-the-year Superintendent's Community Engagement Council. I was joined by members of the Board, city officials, and numerous other community members, as well as businesses, school, and PTA leaders. During the council meeting, Dr. Penny Schultz shared a safety and security update with the group and then solicited feedback. I'd like to thank all of the members of the council for their support and their attendance, especially our partners, DeMuth Train, who generously sponsored the event. Our next meeting will be held in February. And to wrap up tonight, I'd like to thank the Office of Family and Community Engagement for hosting a wonderful evening celebrating the diversity of our school district. Last Thursday night, Deep Creek High School hosted our multicultural family fun night that included the opportunity for families to connect with community resources, play games, participate in arts and crafts, and view a variety of incredible performances. The event wrapped up with the chance for families to enjoy dinner from one of four food stations. Special thanks to the Deep Creek High School Culinary Department for preparing and serving the delicious meals. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board. This completes my spotlight.
Thank you, Dr. Cotton. Last on our agenda this evening is Board Member Items. Does any Board Member have an item to bring before the group? Dr. Walker.
Thank you. I just wanted to give a quick birthday shout-out to our Chair, Ms. Angie Swigert. She's always making sure we get our birthday shout-outs, so I want to say happy birthday to her, who celebrated yesterday. We hope you had a great day.
Mr. Mercer.
We started our meeting talking about the Blue Ribbons that we have on. I just want to say that in the midst of all the sadness and tragedy of the Boston area, Southeast, once again, the community came together yesterday, figuring, putting together a tremendous event and raised a great deal of money to help with the family and expenses. But it wasn't just Hickory, though, and I happened to see them last night. I work on Sundays, so I wasn't able to go to the event, but they were at an after-party at a restaurant I was at last night, took their staff there, and I want to thank Matt and Carrie, all of the folks who have done so much to help in the Hickory community. But you know, this is indicative, when tragedy strikes, our hard-time strike across Chesapeake, and especially in our school system, we pull together, and we show the very best of what Chesapeake is about, and I want to thank all those people that have come to the forefront and supported this family during the pandemic crisis, but it's no different than being able to have a, it makes you proud to be a citizen of the city.
I agree. Seeing no other Board Member items, I will declare this meeting adjourned.